Work session for the City Commission order for Tuesday, November 10th, 2015, 6:00 PM. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mengeleberg is excused. Mayor Holliday?
Here. So has anybody got anything for future agenda items? No? The one thing, Mr. Archer, have we gotten anywhere as far as the Buena Vista House is concerned?
No. Well, I believe the way it was left at the study session that the commission last discussed it was that we're going to allow some time for any research and opportunity to find any additional information. Staff haven't discovered anything new. I know Rocky was working on some, a little bit of research as well, and I don't think we've had a chance to really chat too much about that.
No, and I would say that, I mean, it should be a topic that we, I mean, I'm worried that we'll, you know, forget about it, but, so we need to bring it back.
That's why I keep asking about it.
Keep, oh, I think this is the first time, maybe?
No, no, it's been the topic of discussion for a while.
All right.
So, we'd certainly be happy to put that back on the study session agenda and hopefully conclude the topic and move in some direction.
Yeah, I'd like to get somewhere, one way or the other.
Sure.
All right. So, PC 15-225, Grove Concept Plan, overview and discussion of the re-adoption process. Mr. Conkle.
Thank you, Mayor, and the commissioners. We are going to provide the commission a history of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. This has been going on, this began with the annexations in 2002 and 2004 of properties to the urban growth boundary.
Do you read or digest condensed version, I hope?
It, well, yes. So, we're going to walk through what, some of the history, why, what, we're bringing back a very limited adoption process for the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, which was based on a private, previous commission's remand of the issues. So, we're going to walk through a little bit of that history, why, you're going to see, what you're going to see when we bring this before for public hearings. So, this is a work session. The first planning commission meeting is scheduled for November 23rd. We advertise a city commission meeting on December 2nd. We're required to notice those dates in advance. I'd be shocked if the planning commission gets through it in one night. It'd be great if they did, but they may not, so you're probably looking at a continuance of the city commission meeting until the planning commission can reach a decision. And so with that, I've got Pete Walters working on the project, John Replinger, our transportation expert for the city, to answer questions that you have as we go through the presentation tonight. So, we'll go ahead and turn it over so we can get started on this.
Good evening. Goals of the concept plan are listed here. These came out of the citizen advisory committee that was meeting for two years, and as you can see, their emphasis is building a complete community that is a job creation center on the east side.
So, let me stop you right there for a second, because I see "sustainable" three times in this document.
Yes.
What exactly does "sustainable" mean?
In the plan, it talks about the, what that means. Essentially, they're trying to, they talk about the Bruntland Commission definition of sustainability, which is meeting social objectives while lessening your impact on the environment and creating an economic third, third bottom line, essentially. So, definitely job creation, lessening environmental impact, and providing equity socially in the plan. That's the simplest way I think of it, but there are many, many definitions.
Okay.
Yeah. And there is a lot of discussion about that in the plan. One of the main aspects of the plan is to create a complete transportation system that emphasizes several modes. So, the transportation analysis reflects that. They also want to preserve the capacity and safety along Beaver Creek Road, and we'll talk about that. Strong connections between Oregon City High School and Clackamas Community College for education and job creation potential, this is something that's a big part of the plan, and that's why its location on the east side of Beaver Creek Road is so important. It has amazing views, there are some natural resource areas that require protection under the local land use laws that we have in place.
Hold on a second.
Yeah.
You're the staff guys, I don't feel like I'm picking on you, okay?
Sure, yeah.
But, three and four, green jobs and sustainable industries. What is a green job?
I'd just say the question.
And should the city be in the position of picking winners and losers when it comes to either job creation or commerce?
That was a question posed by the Hamlet Beaver Creek as well, last week. It's a difficult question to answer. I think trying to attract industry of any kind in this area will depend a lot more about public infrastructure needs than just, than the kind of industry that we can get out there. But, the citizen advisory committee put a strong emphasis on this. So, is one of the goals that came out of the public process. Specifically, the kind of industry that it might be a green job creation industry is one that, for example, works on energy independence type projects, like the community college has some wind power assembly classes and things of that nature. If there was a cross connection between Clackamas Community College and a factory on the east side of Beaver Creek Road, that would obviously be fitting that criteria, but we can hope. Additionally, the way that the plan is ultimately constructed, construction jobs and the public works facilities that are ultimately built out there are going to be built to a slightly higher standard from a storm water discharge and those kind of things, potentially, so there'd be specialization in those kind of jobs. But there are many opinions about that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Aerial photo, as you can see, the area is bounded by Thayer Road and Old Acres Lane to the south, takes in the golf course, and it also takes in several parcels that are adjacent to the high school. We have Trimble Creek that flows through the area. It's a goal five natural resource that crosses Loder Road.
Oh, ooh, sorry. So, the area to the east of the golf course, the wooded area that's shown there?
Right.
And the creek, is that part of Rose Holden's property?
Uh, let's see, over here?
Yes, okay.
The area over there that is mostly within a steep slope and landslide area, I believe it is part of the Rose Holden property.
Rose is nodding her head, she's in.
Okay, good.
Jamie, can you give him a mouse so that he can use his pointer on the screen rather than us having to turn around and look at that?
You'll have to come over there.
It works, we've done it before.
Okay, great.
All right. Yep. So, this area is below the 490-foot elevation level, and it includes areas within the future natural resources overlay district and geologic hazard area.
So, if we were Portland, we'd build houses there?
It's not showing up.
It's just a blank.
When we converted it to a PDF, it must have done something wrong, so if we can...
Can I have the mouse back, please?
Yeah. So, the land use plan that's shown here is the hybrid plan. It shows the north employment campus, which is the Title IV industrial land area. The area directly across from the high school is shown as the purple area, that's the mixed employment village, and then you have the two east and, the east mixed-use and west mixed-use neighborhoods to the south where the golf course is. Areas in green reflect natural resource areas, power line corridors, and other natural areas that are not developable, or are park concepts. So, here we'll go over to Carrie Richter and talk about the status of the Luba appeal and what happened after 2008. Thanks.
So, the city commission adopted that concept plan in 2007. That decision was appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals. The petitioner in that case was Elizabeth Grazer Lindsay. Elizabeth Grazer Lindsay raised three assignments of error. The first assignment of error related to the fact that the amount of lands we had designated industrial on that map, about 121 acres, didn't match with what Metro had designated its Title IV lands. Metro had designated, I think, about 150, but it's rough. And so, Luba said because our designation didn't match the Metro Title IV map that is part of the Metro code, that it had, the decision had to be remanded. The second assignment of error that Ms. Grazer Lindsay raised related to utility adequacy and the city's ability to ensure that the utilities would be provided to serve future development without costing money to the rest of the residents with regard to transportation, with regard to sewer, with regard to police, with regard to schools. It was a very multifaceted assignment of error. And then, the third assignment of error had to do with process, whether or not the hybrid plan proposed was, what was the outcome of the citizen involvement committee at the time the decision was made. And so, what Luba did was, Luba remanded the decision with regard to the Title IV land map inconsistency issue, and did not address the other assignments of error at all. So, we didn't have any indication about how appropriate, how strong our findings were, whether we had adequately documented things at the time. The matter was remanded. We approached Metro about how to resolve this Metro code inconsistency, and Metro decided as part of its revisiting the urban growth boundary to revisit the question of adequate industrial lands. What they determined was that the, that the region had adequate industrial lands to reduce the overall number to 120, 118, I think we're about three or over, I think it's less than we have, 121, and identified a shortage in residential lands. And that shortage in residential lands not only was made up for in a tiny, tiny part by Beaver Creek, but also by the urban growth boundary expansion that we saw in Washington County. That decision by Metro was appealed by Elizabeth Grazer Lindsay to the Oregon Court of Appeals because that's where urban growth boundary decisions go. They go to LCDC first, and then they go to the Oregon Court of Appeals. At the same time, there was a great, a lot of wrangling about the Washington County urban growth boundary, as you may remember, call. There was, before Metro decided to expand the urban growth boundary, there was an urban rural reserves decision. That urban rural reserves decision went to the Court of Appeals, too. The Court of Appeals decided to stay the urban growth boundary decision until the urban rural reserves decision was resolved. So, it sat there waiting for urban rural reserves to be decided. You recall that the urban rural reserves problem was resolved by the grand bargain, legislation enacted to settle the question of what would be designated urban and what would be designated rural. So, that decision was made. Metro, at that point, moved to dismiss the urban growth boundary appeal because, at that point, the urban growth boundary was set by legislation, and the Court of Appeals dismissed that case as moot. That happened in February of this past year, so February 2015. So, it, we couldn't have done anything in the meantime because we were waiting for this map conflict to be resolved. So, in February 2015, the court dismisses the whole case. We now are in a position where the industrial lands issue is resolved. In the meantime, since 2007, when we first adopted the plan, we have subsequently adopted a transportation system plan, a water master plan, a sewer master plan, and I think that's a...
Stormwater standards.
And new stormwater standards that have to do with low-impact treatment to, of stormwater. So, one of the main issues that was raised by Ms. Grazer Lindsay in the first go-around was this whole question of transportation. And at the time, we were operating with the old transportation system plan that identified that flyover, really expensive flyover intersection. The new TSP, you know, doesn't have that contemplated for an improvement. So, what we thought was the most appropriate, since we didn't have guidance from Luba and we had more updated data that happened in the interim, our recommendation has been that now we're on remand, we need to adopt the concept plan. I mean, with, the instruction we got from the commission last time we came to you was, instead of revising the substance of the concept plan, which we still think has the merits that it had then, was just to revisit the utility infrastructure thing, to revise it to match the current projections of demand. Because all of those plans included the Beaver Creek Concept Plan lands at the densities that we assumed in the concept plan itself. So, what this does is, in my view, sort of close the circle, because we have more current data about utility infrastructure. So, the instructions we got from the commission last time were to take this back to the planning commission for the limited purpose of opening the record to revisit this utility question and the Title IV lands question, and that's how we're proceeding. Anything else, Pete?
No.
Any questions?
Yes. Oh, you're going to, you're going to mention, so go ahead.
Yeah, so, this is exactly what Carrie's just referred to. The interim public facilities updates that we made since 2008 include the TSP, the sewer master plan, water master plan, and the stormwater standards. We also need to address police and fire services, so we're seeking letters from the Clackamas Fire District and the School District and Oregon City Police Department with respect to that. This shows the updated Title IV industrial lands map. It's about 151 acres, which nets approximately 121 acres of industrial land.
Because of the power lines and other issues?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. And that matches our north employment campus area.
Can you go back just a second?
Sorry.
So, these environmentally sensitive resource areas, what is the intention for those areas?
Yeah. They include areas that are required to be protected as either stream habitat or wetlands, or are considered too steep to build on, or are an area that was identified as a stream corridor buffer on the Metro goal.
So, what would we use those for?
Potentially, well, they also include power line easements.
Okay.
Power line easements, you can potentially put non-habitable structures underneath, storm facilities, parking, transmission lines, et cetera, et cetera, and streets. So, those are potentially useful as developable areas in that sense. However, anything that falls within one of our two natural resource or geologic hazard overlay districts has got to be reviewed under those codes for impact and mitigation.
All right.
The process, 2006 and 2007, this is a summary of the work that was done for citizen outreach, culminating in planning commission hearings and city commission hearings.
This is eight years ago.
Yes. And we will summarize what we've done since. This is the open space and natural areas plan. It's very conceptual, it showed up on the previous slide. The north employment campus is shown here in more detail with the various areas, including the power line corridors. Development-wise, it talks about this being one to two stories of employment uses, again, connections to Clackamas Community College. They talk about tech flex employment sites being possible here. Some of this land is already within the city and zoned campus industrial, so it is within the enterprise zone that the Urban Real Commission is overseeing with Eric Underwood's guidance.
So, that would be most of the section east of Beaver Creek Road starting at Loder, going north?
On, directly abutting Beaver Creek.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. The central mixed employment village area is already received one development approval for a live-work apartment complex, which was zoned mixed-use corridor in 2010. So, that creates the basis for the street system in this area, the extension of Myers Road, and approximately 200 units.
So, that's the development across from the high school?
Yeah, yeah.
And where is that in the process?
Well, it was appealed to Luba, but we got the decision from Luba, and it's going to be proceeding forward, we hope, with engineering review in 2015.
So, Luba dismissed the appeal?
Yeah.
Luba affirmed the city's decision on the merits.
Okay. Yeah, on the site.
So, there's nowhere else that anybody can go as far as an appeal of that project?
It could have been appealed, but that appeal period has passed.
So...
So, no, it cannot be appealed.
Okay.
The building permits, the building permits, as I understand it, have been pulled or are very close to being pulled, I think was the last thing I heard from Alita.
For the live-work?
Yeah, live-work.
No?
No.
Okay.
They need to get through Public Works' review as well.
Have the plans been submitted?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that.
So, that's, a portion of that is the central mixed employment village. Intention here is three to five stories, be transit supportive and very urban and focused, walkable. Mixed-use neighborhoods, the east and the west, closest to Beaver Creek Road, the density is envisioned to be approximately the same as our R2 multifamily zone, but feathering out and lesser in density as it gets close to Henriesy Road. East, east of there would be akin to the R5 zone that we have, which is approximately eight units per acre. But, you're going to have park, Central Park in this area, as well as a neighborhood focal point. The trail system, I'll go into more detail later. Stormwater-wise, the plan for stormwater that was discussed in the concept plan is the same approach that we have adopted with our stormwater and erosion control design standards. So, it is focused on infiltration and, to a lesser degree, on conveyance and treatment and detention. So, those are the, kind of the hierarchy.
So, John, do we or do we not have a separated storm sewer system?
We have a separated storm system, separate from the sanitary system.
And where does that water go?
In this, in this situation here, it goes a couple, several different directions. So, some of it'll go towards the golf course property, some of it'll go down towards the canyon and Loder Road, some of it'll get onto Beaver Creek Road, some of it'll cross Beaver Creek Road.
No, but where does it end up?
Eventually, it ends up in the Willamette River. Is that too far?
Well...
Because it goes, it splits in a couple different basins. One, it goes through Caulfield Creek, and the other one goes...
Okay, yes, so we're draining directly to streams?
Yes.
Stormwater. Okay.
By a fair amount of distance. I mean, this is kind of at the top of the basin, so, for instance, part of the strains to Abernathy Creek, but it takes a while to get there.
Sure. Okay.
Same slide again, just, I've got this interspersed throughout. The site circulation, this is where we start to talk about transportation, so the idea here is to have a center parkway which would serve the build-out of the area that would parallel Beaver Creek Road. East of there and forming an edge to the neighborhood is called the Ridge Parkway. Both of these collector-level roads would connect north and south, as far up into existing neighborhoods at Thayer Road, potentially. Then you have the cross-connections perpendicular to Beaver Creek Road where the extensions of Myers Road and Loder Road, Glen Oak Road, and Timber Skyway.
Commissioner Smith?
Yep.
So, the way that it's on here, the Loder Road, Myers Road, Glen Oak Road are all, the concept is to have them all parallel, but with the, is there rethinking on the alignment of Loder Road after the Oregon City School District Transportation Building, and they were talking about having Loder Road go through and around the high school? So, how does that affect the alignment of the way that's here? Because it would be different if it went straight through and around.
There are several possibilities as far as alignment goes.
Right, so we did, we did more refined planning for Myers Road extension, and so, you know, potentially, you know, hopefully in the future, we will see something similar that would connect Loder to the intersection with Beaver Creek. Essentially, it's trying to utilize the existing intersection location, but just straightening that street out so that it comes in at a 90 rather than a off-angle like it currently does.
But then it would go at another angle out, probably.
With, with new roads, we have a little bit easier ability to make sure that it comes in at a 90 for a longer transition.
Right, okay.
This is a local road connectivity option figure in the plan that shows some of the flexibility that could be...
But again, this is all just, this is all just completely pie in the sky, conceptual.
It is, yeah.
Okay.
It meets the purposes of having a Title 11 transportation network that can be accepted by Metro, but we do have to adopt this and reflect it in our TSP, which we did, and I'll talk about that.
Okay.
So, on to that. Within the transportation system plan, this is the list of likely-to-be-funded TSP projects within the concept plan area. They all have a project number, they have a priority. Those are, they have slightly different names on this chart than they do in the concept plan. For example, the Holly Lane connect, connection is called the Center Parkway, and the Meadow Lane connection is known as the Ridge Parkway. So, the nomenclature's changed a little. They also have costs associated with them and a little more detail with respect to how they connect to the trail system and the bike system. So, there are also bicycle and pedestrians projects associated with these primary transportation projects in the plan. John, do you want to talk briefly about this?
Well, I think the important thing to keep in mind is that the analysis that was done for the Beaver Creek Concept Plan in 2007, 2008 resulted in a series of project recommendations that were identified in the concept plan. And in fact, those were carried forward into the TSP. And so, what we have is consistency in terms of development of the Beaver Creek area as a combination of residential and employment uses. We have commonality and consistency with regard to the transportation system and the grid system that's identified in both. And as Pete just said, we carried these forward in the TSP in the likely-to-be-funded project table with the priority, short, medium, and long term, and with project numbers and descriptions. So, again, it's consistency between the TSP and the prior Beaver Creek plan.
This is a slide that indicate, illustrates how those projects look when you dig down into the transportation system plan. So, the D projects are all street and intersection expansions. Then you have our walking solutions map, bicycling solutions, and the shared use path Within the concept plan, there are several street section diagrams, and this is where we'll be talking about laneage, the number of lanes on Beaver Creek Road. The concept plan specified that Beaver Creek Road would be improved as a green boulevard with a five-lane arterial section to Clermont, then a three-lane arterial with room for five lanes if needed from Clermont to the urban growth boundary. And these projects are on the transportation system plan as Project D-81 and D-82. The stormwater or low-impact development facilities is... The stormwater or low-impact development facilities that are shown in these street sections is conceptual still. I mean, the final engineering design would be, need to be refined to meet the objectives of low-impact development. It might mean putting swales on one or both or sides of the road and that sort of thing. But for concept planning purposes, these are what we were adopting in the plan. I won't spend too much time on this, but this is getting to what John was just talking about, and the findings that we will be bringing before the Planning Commission and the City Commission for Transportation. Most of these projects will be development-driven, meaning the developers will provide the dedications of land and provide the frontage improvements directly abutting their property. We have included preliminary construction cost estimates and financing options in the plan, in the TSP. It is a multimodal transportation plan, so there's what's called a mode-split calculation that was done for the transportation system plan that takes into account people using other forms of transportation to get to where they need to, both within the plan and adjacent to it. Land use reviews would support transit service in this area by ensuring that we have a mix of land uses and densities and design options that support public transportation. We want to ensure that local connectivity between pedestrian routes is provided throughout the area. We showed you some trail and sidewalk maps that are conceptual. We also have to meet the transportation planning rule, and this is where I'll rely on John's expertise to talk about this in a little bit more. So in order to meet that rule, we have to identify, we adopted a transportation system plan with needed improvements and cost estimates, and we have to mitigate the impacts of development in that area, except where the city code has exempted certain types of development. So we recognize that the transportation system plan has identified cost limitations for certain projects, and despite those investments, the intersection operating conditions at Oregon 99E and I-205, Oregon 213 and Beaver Creek Road, and I-205 and Oregon 213 are the three intersections identified in our code that will exceed those standards. But for the purposes of evaluating the impact of proposed development that is permitted outright, conditionally, or through a detailed development plan review, we are not going to be required to meet those standards in order to approve those developments. And until solutions or alternative mobility targets are explored for the intersections, and that is what we need to talk about with, with John and with the, with ODOT. That is probably the number-one thing that is a priority as a follow-up item once we adopt the plan, is getting a plan in place or at least a process in place for adoption of the alternative mobility standards. John, you want to talk about that?
Well, I guess I would say that with regard to the alternative mobility standards, you're certainly aware that with the TSP, we adopted a new standard in Oregon City and the Metro did it, which is allow a greater level of congestion than we have typically allowed in the past. But even with that new standard, many communities in the, in the metro region are seeing the same thing that we're seeing at the four key intersections that Pete just named. We're going to have more congestion, and we need to come up with a new mobility standard. So we promised that when we adopted the TSP, and we've had a lot of discussions about it with ODOT, some discussions with other agencies, and as Pete said, it's a priority to start moving forward on that.
So is that, is that code speak for, we're going to lower the bar?
I think it is.
Okay.
You know, because as Kerry mentioned, we used to have, the prior TSP had a really grand, expensive interchange solution for 213 and Beaver Creek, and that's not going to happen.
Right.
So, yes, I think what we're talking about is a new standard, which as you accurately described, is lower the bar, but I think there are also going to be some other things that we offer up as ways to, in part, mitigate the additional congestion and manage that congestion. There are several hints about that in the TSP, traffic operations management, more emphasis on alternative modes, more emphasis on shorter trips, and bicycling and walking, and various other activities like that. But we will soon begin on the more formal process of developing an alternative mobility standard.
I think as part, as part of that will also be, you know, we obviously have limited amount of funds that are available, not only at the local level, but at the state and the federal level. And so making sure that while we make those investments, you know, with the limited funds that we have, while it might not make the intersection meet the adopted V-O-C standard, it will in some way improve the trip as it relates to the corridor as a whole, or alternatives, or make it safer, you know, so, you know, we can't build our way out of some of these fixes.
We could play movies at that intersection while people are waiting to go through.
We'll add that to the list. Movies on the highway? That'd be great.
They do that. I was in Chiang Mai last year, and they do that. They, they play movie trailers at intersections, like, wait. So it's not unheard of.
No.
They, movies are commercials.
They're movie, they're movie trailers.
Keep that in mind as we go forward.
Another first for Oregon City.
Summarizing the acreages here, of develop, developing, development areas, there's about 285 acres, 284 acres gross, and it would net over the entire area, 235 net acres. We have a significant amount of parks, open space, and natural areas, and as well as major right-of-ways. These are preliminary and rounded estimates.
And how much of that acreage is currently inside the city limits?
Great question. I think about 40 acres.
Okay.
About 38 acres, I believe, of enterprise zones, that are campus industrial.
And of those property owners that are in this 453 acres, how many of them would be willing to annex? Do you have any idea?
I don't.
Does somebody have an idea?
I don't.
Can we find out?
Let's try.
Based on those acreages, we had Echo Northwest was the consultant to put together a report, and OTAC used that report to develop the job and housing density assumptions here. Approximately 5,000 jobs could potentially be created, most of those in the north employment campus area, but a significant amount in the mixed employment village area as well. And then with the revisions, using the hybrid plan, about approximately 1,000 units of housing evenly split between single-family and attached-type housing. These are the meetings that we've had to update various committees and groups on the process. We've met with Caulfield Neighborhood Association, PRAK, Transportation Advisory Committee, NRC, and CIC, and also with the Hamlet of Beaver Creek.
How did that go?
They got an excellent chair. Tammy Stevens is great at running a meeting, and we have, we do expect them to be submitting a lot of written comment based on their concerns of, mostly to do with transportation. However, there are some, you know, members of the Hamlet who are probably going to come forward on their own and have concerns and comments. And then we go to the Planning Commission on November 23 for the first hearing, and before you on the December, December 2 for the first hearing.
So it's unlikely that you'll be to us on the 2nd of December?
Unlikely if the Planning Commission continues it, yeah.
If I may interrupt Pete, the other thing that I think is important to know about this is that we don't have the implementing zoning yet. So upon adoption of this concept plan, it won't take effect until we have the implementing zoning. And the way the code is written right now, with the intersections that haven't, we haven't yet identified alternative mobility solutions to, the code provides no zone changes or plan amendments until those alternative mobility standards are in place. So although folks in the Beaver Creek Concept Area, Plan Area could develop at their FU-10, Future Use 10 Clackamas County designations, and they could annex to the city and keep those FU-10 designations, they're not going to be able to change to designations that meet that plan till we figure out this alternative mobility standard issue.
You lost me at the bakery.
Sorry.
So you're saying that people, that the areas that are inside our urban growth boundary could be developed at the county's FU-10, and we would have nothing to say about it?
No, I'm saying that the, any development that is allowed today, whether it's in the county or the city, will happen at much lower densities, at the densities that are permitted outright right now, not those designations that are up there. In order for those designations that are up there to take effect, anywhere except for in that evergreen area and the 40 acres that is already designated industrial in the city, we would need to adopt the implementing zoning, which we haven't done yet, and we need to have the alternative mobility measures in place for the intersections to allow the additional congestion, the additional trips.
Well, how long is it going to take to do that alternative mobility?
We don't know.
We don't know.
We don't know because it's never been done before.
So.
It's like I, I mentioned.
We did something similar with the multimodal mixed-use area designation that we had down on 99E as part of the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. That was the first one of those as well.
Okay, so the, can we adopt the zoning for areas that are outside the city limits?
No. Well, we can, but we can't implement them until they're within the city.
So we're going to have a, we're going to have a, I imagine, we've got three things that are going to, that are going to happen. We've got to deal with the alternative mobility standard with the negotiation with Clackamas County and Oregon Department of Transportation on what that is going to be.
That should be fun.
Then we have writing the zoning, the implementing zoning that's necessary for the properties. And then, you know, I think that there's probably a higher likelihood that there's going to be an appeal of this. And so it truly is, though, if we're, the resources that we have in addressing the issues that, that we have to address in the immediate.
So let me, I want to be clear, just for everybody out there in TV land, we started this in 2002?
That was when the initial urban growth boundary expansions occurred.
We didn't start the concept planning until 2007.
Oh, so it's only been eight years. Okay. All right.
And so I want to clarify a little bit, too, for everybody out there also. So three things, let me make sure I have this right, need to happen before anything moves forward. The alternative mobility standard, then the land needs to be annexed in, and then it can be zoned.
And we need to write that zoning code. There is no east mixed-use neighborhood zone right now.
But after the concept plan, though, is adopted, the employment campus, what's already zoned industrial can go forward.
There are some acreage that's already in the city limits that's zoned campus industrial.
Okay.
Right, but anything outside of the city limits right now, we have to write the zoning code for that.
I have to go through those three steps.
So you could, we could write the zoning code, and we could adopt the zoning code without any further messing around, right?
Right, other than writing it and going through the process of adopting it and implementing it.
Right.
Correct.
But that's not inside the city limits.
It doesn't, it doesn't, we're not going to apply it. We're going to write it, just like we have, the concept plan sits here as a document. We're going to write the code that implements it, and it's our impression that it's going to mirror some of the zones we already have. So we're not going to create a new industrial zone, we're going to.
Minor tweaks.
What that in effect, what that in effect does, though, is it tells people who are, you know, say somebody was wanting to develop in the county at FU-10, that if they annexed, they would have a much higher use, higher density, you know, would be more profitable for them to wait or to annex in to do that development, if we had those standards.
There'd be much more certainty onto what the standards and allowed use is permitted use is.
But the concept plan is the first step. The concept plan is going to be part of our comprehensive plan. So if that's your goal, that this is the first step in that process.
Right.
The other thing about the alternative mobility standards that makes it a little complicated is, the reason we didn't do it was because ODOT was going to do it for the region. And we have learned that ODOT is not moving as quickly in doing it for the region as we thought. So we are at a decision, we, we are maybe soon at a decision point about whether or not we're going to go it alone, which, you know, has some pros and cons, or wait for ODOT to do it as region-wide.
Will the, will the ACT have any influence on that?
I don't think the ACT would on, on mobility standards, that's more looking at projects.
I don't believe so.
Okay. Commissioner Smith? Oh, I thought I heard you sigh back there.
Possibly.
But I think it's important for the public to know that, that this is not, development is not just going to happen.
Well, obviously, it took us eight years to get to this.
Well, I'm just pointing out that this is not going to redesignate anybody's lands upon adoption. It is the first in a multi-step process, and this is not going to result in congestion at these intersections at the levels that we expect to see upon full build-out of this area.
Well, I haven't heard from anybody inside this about, you know, having a problem with it. It's the other people that seem to have a problem. Are we done? Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Unless they have questions for us, more than what we've gone through so far.
So we hold off on annex, any thoughts of annexation, you think, or?
I want to give staff an opportunity to find out, to answer to my question.
Just wondering, because maybe a vote coming up.
Vote?
For annexation. That we may have to look at.
Yeah, I think we need to talk about that more, moving forward. Anybody else? Well, all I want to say is, I want to move this thing along. So I am, I hate spending money and doing plans and have them sit on a shelf for 10 or 15 years, and then having to spend that money and do it all over again. So let's do whatever we need to do to move this thing forward, bring it forward to the Planning Commission, get them to sign off on it, bring it to the City Commission, let's get this thing adopted.
Agreed.
Okay. So.
Thank Pete.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, appreciate your time. 15-620 Willamette Falls Legacy Project Update, Mr. Conkle.
Oh, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I have Christina Robertson Gardner is going to be assisting me with the presentation tonight. So we're here to provide you an update on where we're at with the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, both the Riverwalk, IGA with the partners, as well as the Community Playing and Development Grant that we received and the, and the work products associated with that. We had hoped to be in front of you tonight. A month and a half, two months ago, we came before you with kind of a term sheet of what that IGA would look like between the partners. So we've been then working on actually writing the document itself, and it had been circulated. As part of that is a finance plan that was going to be, that is going to be adopted with that for the two years of work that's upcoming with the Riverwalk design and engineering. So in, in working with our partners at the state, we determined that we needed to refine the finance plan that was submitted to and approved by the Governor's Office for the initial $5 million from the state to clarify how some of the funds can be spent, as well as some of the match to those funds can be spent over this process. So that is what we are working on right now. Unfortunately, we had to postpone the partners' meeting for this Friday. We hope to get that scheduled in the next month, prior to Christmas, and then bring the IGA back to you, the, each of the commissions and councils to adopt in early January. What we realized as we went through this process with Snowheta Dialogue and Mayor Reed was just the complexity of the project that we're about to undertake, and trying to write a scope today for work that was going to occur a year to 18 months from now was difficult. So we actually broke that process up into three separate scopes, smaller scopes, so that as we complete one scope, it'll help inform the scope. that as we complete one scope, it'll help inform the scope and the product of the next one. So with the first scope, we'll actually have Snowheta and the Dialogue and Mayor Reed teams really taking a high-level look at the whole site, because we've talked a lot about how it's difficult to just think of the Riverwalk without the impacts on the private side or the private side on the public side. So essentially, they're going to look at it, just get an idea, a feel of what opportunities are of the entire site, and then focus in on the Riverwalk itself. So that would be one of the product, is really an overall look at the entire area. And then the second part of that would be the, the public participation kickoff, you know, really trying to get an idea of what type of uses there would be the community's expecting out here, or would like to see out here. And then in those later scopes that'll come, you know, we would begin to take that information and refine alternative Riverwalk designs, and then in the last scope, the third phase, would be the final preferred plan, essentially. So that's kind of where we're at, at a high level. Christina obviously can provide, she's going to provide an update on the Community Planning and Development Grant, and she could also provide some more detail on the Snowheta contract negotiation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Conkle. Yeah, just to play off a little bit what Mr. Conkle was saying, the, the first phase is really looking at that first big look, but I think the key that our lens has been this whole time is, how can development influence and support the open space, and how can open space influence and support development? So integration is, just like last time, I felt like I was a broken record that said we are a balance of flexibility and certainty in the Vision Master Plan. You'll hear, it's all about integration this time around, because we really want to make sure that all the money we spend are helping both the private development and the public. And so that's first phase, we'll be looking at programming, and programming is also spatial. So depending on what we're hearing from the community of how we want to use this space, that's definitely going to impact the size and how you program certain things. Some things may have a big programming space, some things may be small, some things, obviously we want to share as many uses in one programming space. So that's why they're reaching out at the beginning. So we will be having about midway through that first phase, a big public open house, there's going to be a survey that'll lead up into that, and then the open house, or almost the public event, because it's going to be more integrated than that, is going to kind of speak back to what we were hearing for the public, and then also get more information in person. So that will then kind of lay out to a, kind of a big-picture pre-concept plan, and then that second phase will be looking at alternatives, and then we'll move forward with the preferred plan. And what we're calling is, it's a conceptual design for the, the whole thing, and then we'll zoom in on the first phase, the first schematic design, and that's really where you get into more detail. And, you know, our big design direction to the, to the design team is, it needs to be, have a, have a strong view of the falls and be catalytic. So we don't know how big Phase One is, and we don't know where exactly it's going to be, so that, that answer will come out of this process. We know we have a certain amount of money to build Phase One, we're still raising money, but we are looking at kind of that 19, you know, $18 million we have and about a $12 million capital project for Phase One, if no additional money is raised. So how do we make sure we get the best use and can catalyze economic development? And how do we make sure that that first phase also is integrated with what the owners want to do? Because the last thing we want is, the Riverwalk on one side and the owners working on the other side, they're not building off each other. So that's one of the big goals. So the Riverwalk, we hope to have the Snowheta contract signed as soon as the IGA can be approved, so that's kind of waiting, and we're all bated breath excited to move forward. Does anybody have questions on the Riverwalk before I move forward on the development? Okay. So the, the third big project, the third project on your report tonight is the Can We Planning Development Grant we received from Metro with our joint refined master plan with Falls Legacy. And we're calling it a refined master plan and development strategy, because it's both. A lot like the Vision Plan last time, there's some products that'll come out of this, and the main deliverables we see is a refined master plan land use document, and actually right now, we're hoping if we can integrate that with the Riverwalk, the Planning Commission will see one refined land use, so we're, that's our goal right now, so we won't have kind of two land use applications. The second deliverable is a development opportunity strategy report, so those are the things we learned that may not need to, maybe shouldn't go into a land use application, but is part of that education, that's reaching out, what we learned to reach out to the development community, the public, a lot like we had the Vision Document and the Land Use Plan, we'll have kind of those two separate documents. It also will provide a lot of the data and information that we'll use for our public implementation plan, so that's really running the numbers. What are the costs for the Riverwalk? What do we think the cost for infrastructure? What are we learning about the gap in finance for the individual redevelopment of the buildings? And we'll be laying out that public implementation plan. And really, the fourth product, which is not part of the grant, but is really the culmination as a development agreement with Falls Legacy LLC. So you kind of take the land use application, the public finance, a public implementation plan, the development opportunity strategy, and all of that will kind of build into what we have for our development agreement with, with the property owner. So we're working with, Falls Legacy LLC has a Portland owner's rep, and we're working with her, her name's Kim Knox, with Shields Opless Johnson, and the idea is we will together be working through the kind of scope, schedule, deliverables of this project together, and I can tell you, it's very unique to do this, to kind of have both the private and public working together on the project, but we think that if we put in our public money and they put in their private money, and we did our own projects separately, we would not get the value add that we have to put it together. So we're, we're working really hard to try to figure that all out. What's going to come out of it, that you're going to have between the IGA, the Riverwalk, and the development study, you're going to be most likely involved in six different agreements, so I'm going to kind of lay those out for you. I don't know exactly where they'll all fall down. It might actually be a little bit like dominoes, where suddenly in like three meetings, you have them all coming down at once, and they may be stretched out a little bit. But there, the partners' IGA, the IGA with Metro in Oregon City that transfers the, the grant money, the IGA with Metro where we give our money identified in the budget for the Riverwalk to them, and the, the kind of spelled out in the IGA, a pre-development agreement with Falls Legacy LLC, that's kind of our working agreement of how we're going to all do this together. It's actually the first deliverable of the Metro grant project, so Oregon City and Falls Legacy kind of agree on how, how money is transferred, what's the approval process, and what's conflict resolution. So that'll be a, an adopted document by Oregon City. And then there's going to be an IGA with Clackamas County for some of their money that's going into the development. So, Winston, there'll be lots of different.
Five.
Five? Partners' IGA, IGA with Metro for Riverwalk, IGA with, yes, there's only five right now. There's five.
Potentially have some agreement with Falls Legacy LLC, it might not be an IGA.
Right, that's pre-development agreement. So, as I'm saying, it's not just one IGA that's coming. There'll be lots of different ways we're implementing this. And I think the key is just, we're working really hard on the integration, and I can tell you what I've learned over the years is, you can think big picture, but then you have to say, what do we need to know now to get to the next step? And then you get to the next step, and you say, what do we need to know now? Because you could study the site forever, and so.
Yeah, well, that's not happening.
Right, and that's not happening. So we don't have the money, we don't want to waste our money. So, but you always, so everything we're doing is trying to figure out what is our scope detail to get us to the next phase, but not over-study it. So that's what we're working on, and I can tell you, it's a, it's definitely a thread we're threading through everything, to not, not study too much, but not understudy. Any questions?
I think it's great that, that, with the integration, I think that's so important. So Falls Legacy LLC, they're totally on board with working together and trying to make sure that everything works together.
Yes. I can tell you, we're still working on a lot of the details. I think some of it is just, you know, how public does, manages a process and how, and just, we have different lenses for everything, so it's just working through, and that's what this fall is, is just working through this process fall and winter, but we hope, we're getting closer every week, so we hope, hoping to move forward, and we are. So I don't have a perfect scope for you today, but we're better today than we were a month and a half ago, so.
Well, let me say, I was down on Saturday and wrangled tours, and, you know, to a person, everybody's going, when are you going to start building something down here? And I keep saying, well, you know, there's a lot of preliminary stuff to do, so people don't understand just how much pre-work there is to do, you know? You don't buy a piece of property and go out the next day and start building a house, you got to, you know, get an architect and build the foundation and all that stuff first, and so that's what we're doing in this process.
Absolutely.
I think just to add a couple more items, we did submit a pre-app for a grant to look at filling the trails, parks and rec trails between the promenade to the Children's Park and Kenema, so identifying that route. We think that's a key route necessary for bike-pet access, not only tying South End to Kenema Bluff, to Kenema Children's Park, to Kenema, to McLaughlin, to the promenade, but then also into the elevator downtown in the Blue Heron Site.
Perfect.
We've also are working on a joint EPA Brownfield Grant in coordination with Metro and Clackamas County focusing on the 9090 corridor from Oregon City north to Milwaukee. That's a $600,000 joint grant. We would be obviously focusing most of our ask on the Blue Heron Site, so essentially what that money is available for is Phase One, Phase Two environmental analysis, and a remediation plan. More importantly, by going through this process and completing it, it opens up cleanup funds as a separate grant cycle request, so trying to position the, the property for potential cleanup funds moving forward through that joint application with our partners at Metro and Clackamas County, and then supporting, you know, whether it be additional work along 9090 and anywhere between here and Milwaukee, targeting the 9090 corridor.
Okay.
That's good.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Christina. Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
That is it for this work session. Do you have anything in addition, Mr. Manager?
I just wanted to have Mr. Lethal come up and provide a brief update and question. Real briefly, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As you may know, yesterday, the city manager recruitment opened. So far, we've had 48 hits, that means 48 people have looked at it, four applications, probably not all qualified for the position based on what my look.
You've had four applications already?
Uh-huh. Well, the problem with, it's also good and bad. The problem with online recruiting is that if their application already exists in the system.
It'll go.
All they have to do is hit submit, and, and some of these, sometimes folks do that when they are on unemployment, and this, this counts as.
Right.
Looking for a job. So, but it's, only one of the four has prior city experience, the others are non-players, so, but you have four applications so far. Reason I'm here also is because I received a citizen comment regarding the policy standards and criteria for the city manager, city manager recruitment, and that, that basically, the citizen asked for a preference or some, some notice of a preference for non-work-related volunteer organization participation. And we can, we can either add that to the job announcement, or we can just consider it during the, you know, during the screening process and during, and during the interview process. That is probably a, a better mechanism to, to do that. But that's, that was the only, only citizen comment I received.
I understand the, the intent of that, but, you know, that's sort of like me saying, you know, I expect you to go water skiing, because I like to water ski on your time off, you know? I, I think that's really something, you know, certainly some of those organizations, the city manager probably will attend just because they're those kinds of organizations, the Chamber or something else. I don't know that I want to put any preference on what somebody does on their off-duty time.
And that's a question we can ask in the interview process?
Right, sure.
And, you know, what the involvement would be, and, yeah, I don't think.
Well, if the applicant's smart, they will bring that up, too.
Right.
This is, because if they have any, if they've done their homework in this city, find out that that's alive and well, so they will volunteer that information.
Well, and that's one of the things that, especially I have noticed over some of the interviews for either committees or the things that we've done recently, is, is that I expect that if somebody is applying for a position, that they do their homework, so that they can answer the basic questions about that position, and I think we've had some folks recently who haven't done their homework, so I would expect that if the applicants, you know, that you're going to, you know, be the, the first step in the chain as far as evaluating whether they've done any homework about us at all.
And that was the only comment I received, so that's it.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything for the other order?
Then where's your?